Over to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Clark. Right, so we are welcome to today's Finance and General Purposes Meeting. We are live on Facebook. We are being recorded. Thank you very much. I think we can take the initial parts as read, but please make sure to turn your telephones off. And if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute so that we have a more quiet meeting. It's easier to hear what's going on. Thank you very much. Do we have any members of the public this evening? Andrew?
Not currently, Chairman.
Thank you very much. So let's move on to the agenda of part one. Apologies for absence.
None received, Chairman.
None received. Okay, thank you very much. Agreement of agenda between parts one and two. There is no part two. Declarations of interest. Any declare any disclosable interest? Do we have any declaration of interest this evening? No, thank you very much. So I presume we'll have no dispensations either.
No, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Minutes. So minutes of the meeting on the 23rd of July. Any queries or questions or comments on the minutes? No? Are we all happy? I'll propose through the chair then that we accept those minutes. Can I see a show of hands, please?
That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Which takes us on to item six, the grant applications. We have a couple of items on our agenda here. There is one slight correction. The first item, item six A, is not a new application for a grant. It is a report back from the Dawlish Gardens Trust with images of the trees that they have planted up. And very nice they look too. It's always nice to get feedback from the projects that we help to make happen. So I think that comes up with an invitation from them for councillors to go and have a look at it. Look at the sensory gardens. Any comments or questions or queries on item six A, the Dawlish Gardens Trust pictures? No, Andrew, I guess we just note that.
Just note that, Chairman, please.
Can I see a show of hands to note that then, please? Thank you very much, everybody. Item six B, Strand Community Trust, request £5,000 to support future plans to secure the centre following loss of revenue due to the pandemic. We have all the papers here. Would anybody like to make any comments on this one? Councillor Linda Pedderick and then councillor Lynne Goodman-Bradbury.
I have got similar concerns to the ones I had before. The beginning one, community support groups unable to pay the charity rate. I think we need to be very careful there because I do know that there are charities that are coming to us to ask us to pay their share of the rent. I know one is definitely coming to us, so that would mean we'd be paying it twice. So I think we need to think about that. The Lighthouse Project and Family Time, I think the way things are going, I'm not sure we should be giving grants for something at Christmas when we don't even know if things like that are going to be possible at Christmas. Also, we are supposed to be giving out, the large grant is normally for about £2,000, but I've still got the one big thing, which is about the £10,000 that they wrote off. And I think someone actually wrote in to the council to ask what that was about. And then they said, well, if the auditors is okay about it, well, the auditor shouldn't be okay about it, really. So I have got concerns about this and I don't know what, I'll wait and see what everybody else thinks and says.
Thank you. Andrew, do we have them here to talk to their, talk to their application?
No, Chairman, we did have an approach earlier in the day from somebody. I don't know their name and they did say that they would join the meeting, but they haven't done so as yet.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Goodman-Bradbury?
I mean, I've previously had involvement with the Strand Centre, but I don't feel that it is as interesting as it is over two years ago. I mean, I hear some of the concerns that councillor Pedderick has mentioned, but I do feel that, I mean, I was surprised at the amount of grant and it might be that we consider a lesser amount from that point of view because of the fact that £5,000 is a lot. My thoughts are that the Strand has been an integral part of the Helping Dawlish Group. And it seems, for whatever reason, was not given a grant the last time that an application was before us. Perhaps it would be beneficial for us to invite a member of the trustees to come along and maybe answer some of the questions directly. And to, just to allay members' fears, if there are other concerns that members have. My feeling would be that we think in terms of a lesser amount to support them through what potentially could be the up and coming pandemic time. And see if we can support them through that.
Thank you, councillor Terry Lauder. Are you still on mute?
I too am uncomfortable with this application. I have great sympathy with them. I know they do good work and I think their aims objective are fine and I see all their activities have a benefit to a good many people. But that can be said for an awful lot of organisations. We can't just hand out taxpayers' money to everybody just because they've had a bad year. You know, we've all had a bad year. I'm inclined to go along with the idea of asking a representative to come along and talk to us. I want to know more about it. It needs justification. I really don't want someone to go along and agree to it. On the other hand, I have some sympathy, so I don't want to refuse it either. I want to know more.
Thank you. Councillor Morehood, then councillor Foden.
Thank you, Chair. I'm thinking that maybe this is a little premature because for the foreseeable future, a lot of the things which the Strand has done in a marvellous way for a long time aren't possible as far as we know. And I wonder whether we, again, I agree that we should know a lot more about this and more up to date finances. And that they perhaps then could reapply when we've got a better idea of when they can recommence all their much needed and much appreciated activities. But at the moment, they can't do anything any more than a lot of other groups can do. And I think this is a little premature. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Foden.
Thank you. I hear the concerns that my colleague councillors have said. I see that this is a brand new application from the last time. And I know and thank the Strand Centre for their hard work that they put in during lockdown. They've been cooking hot meals and giving out food for free at the Strand Centre on weekdays during lockdown and the months in between up to now. I know they've been really welcoming to anybody who's been going in there and I have been in there a few times on my days off from work. I understand that the grant application is for a large amount and I wonder whether we could consider maybe a lesser amount on this time. So, but I'd like to consider this application, but I have heard the concerns of my colleague councillors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I've seen councillor John Pedderick. I know councillor Linda Pedderick, you have your hand up, but you have spoken already. So I'm trying to get everybody to speak first before coming around to people for a second term. Councillor John Pedderick.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I can't see how the figures add up because the grant is for £5,000. But can I just refer everybody to page six, sorry, page 10 of the application? If you happen to have it in front of you, because what they're highlighting there comes to 4,200. But there are additional work and they want to employ somebody, a part-time administrator. But just going down through the items on page six, subsidising use of the centre. Well, isn't the centre in direct competition with us? I mean, we're struggling to make money from the matter. And now they're asking us to subsidise their letting so that people can have it for a reduced rate, which I'm not comfortable with. Then moving on to training, they're asking us to cover the cost of training as well. That's presumably paying a trainer to come in and pay their wages effectively. And also, as we mentioned earlier, the Lighthouse Project and Family Time. Well, that's a Christmas orientated thing, which might not happen anyway, but those figures don't add up. It's 4,200 and they're asking for 5,000. So I can't quite understand where it's coming from. And I do think it needs to be presented to us by a representative from the Strand Centre. And yeah, and I would be okay with a lesser amount, but £5,000 seems a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Just from my point of view, I think it is a lot of money without somebody coming to the committee to actually explain what they need it for and why they're asking us for that amount of money. And for the larger grants, I do think it's reasonable to expect people to turn up and put their case together. I understand that they wouldn't have been able to get the £10,000 grant that many small organisations with premises have because they're a church building. The same occurred to the Cockwood Village Hall, which didn't get a grant either, being a church building, as opposed to anything else that wasn't, that did get that grant. So many, many churches, many village halls are actually doing reasonably well because they've had a £10,000 cash injection. But I too have concerns of some of the, some of the activities and some of the things that have been expressed. Andrew and then councillor Linda Pedderick, then councillor John Pedderick.
Chairman, thank you. Just to say, I have received an email from a representative of the Strand Centre to say that they're having technical difficulties getting into the meeting. I have sent them the link and I hope they will be able to join shortly.
Okay, thank you. If they don't, I would suggest that we might think to defer this to a meeting when they can join us. So it's councillor Linda Pedderick and then councillor, I missed who had their, who had their hand up first, whether it's councillor Morehood or councillor John Pedderick. Okay, councillor Linda Pedderick, councillor John Pedderick, then councillor Val Morehood, please.
Actually, I was going to propose that we defer this to the next meeting and invite them to come along and answer questions. But one of the things I wanted to know, I thought the cafe was a separate thing to the Strand Centre, so don't they get funded in other ways? I didn't know, am I not reading this right? Is any of this for the cafe?
I can't answer that question.
No, okay. Yeah, but that's, if they can't get in, that's what I would like to propose.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor John Pedderick.
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned the fact that the Strand Centre haven't qualified for a grant. But on page nine of their application, it confirms that they received £3,800 from Devon County Council towards their COVID-19 work. So they have had a grant of £3,800.
Indeed, which I saw, but the grant in question is a flat £10,000 grant that came from the government. But if you had a premises with business rates less than £15,000 a year or something, a certain amount, you automatically qualify for a grant and receive £10,000 cash grant, which many village halls did succeed in getting, I'm pleased to say. That was the one I was referring to. So you're right to point out they had a grant for the work they did during lockdown, which is much appreciated, as other councillors have said. Councillor Morehood.
I was actually going to refer to page nine as well. I appreciate your comments, Chair, about the £10,000 grant. I would be interested to know what it did cost them for the COVID-19 work and whether that Devon County Council grant covered it. And I also see that they have, I believe, if I'm reading it correctly, over five, just over £5,000 unrestricted funds. So, and again, referring to my concerns that I think at this minute, it's a little bit premature as to what they're going to need in the next, say, six months. I think there's a lot of things that we need to know more about before we can balance all the pros and cons. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Terry Lauder.
I think a lot of the points that my colleagues made accentuate the need for them to come here and explain things. There are quite a few questions there that we can't possibly answer. One I'd make a guess at is the £5,000 that councillor Morehood referred to. I think they say they want to keep in reserve. They feel that they need £5,000 reserve. I've read that somewhere in the dissertation that's entered. So, but we need to know more. We need to know more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, is there any sign of them actually joining us?
No, I've not had a reply to the email, Chairman.
So I think we have two options here, councillors, and I will give you the choice. We can put this item back to the end of the meeting and come back to it then. And if they've had a chance to join us, we can revisit it. And if not, suggest that we, as councillor Pedderick suggested, defer it to the next meeting. Or we can take a vote on it right now. Councillor Terry Lauder.
I prefer to put it back to the end of the meeting, I think.
Okay, so can we take a quick vote on whether we, let's, the proposal is that we shift this item to the final item on our agenda this evening.
Just, sorry, just to try to take the vote, I see councillor Morehood has a hand up.
Councillor Morehood?
Thank you, Chair. It just occurs to me that even if we put it back to the end of this meeting on the basis that they might be able to join us, they won't have heard our queries. And I've got a feeling that we ought to put some of these queries to them in writing so that they can prepare their answers to bring it back to us perhaps for the next meeting. It's just a thought.
It's a valid thought, although one could argue that they should have answers to hand to most of these queries that we're asking. So if everybody's happy, a show of hands, please, if we would like to retake this to the end of the meeting as our final agenda. There's two, four, okay?
Three, four.
Four. Any, any against? One, one against, two against? Any abstain? To abstain. So three to two, that is.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on. And we'll come back to that. We've just got the invoices for payments, direct debit and income to go through. So it's not a huge, huge delay anyhow. So we have two sheets here, if I have read this correctly. Is that right, Andrew?
That's right, Chairman, yeah.
Thank you very much. It feels very rude to refer to you as Clark, maybe Mr. Clark, or I'm not quite sure how the most polite way of, so apologies.
Whatever you like, Chairman.
As Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. So looking at this, we have first one I have here, which hopefully is the first one everyone has, the cash book number five, NatWest one card. Andrew, would you like to share this on screen or do you want us to look at it off screen?
Whatever you think is more beneficial, Chairman.
Councillors, would you find it easier to follow through if we share it on screen? Yes?
Yeah.
No? I think it'll be easier then because we often get lost even when we're in the same room.
Bear with me one second then.
Because the sheets do look very similar. That's the one. Okay. Any comments on this? This is the one card, the corporate card. Cycle rack, sandbags, shopping cards, bike chain and lock, office supplies. What was the SLCC remote conference?
That was one of their webinars. I don't know the specific one, but I think that one related to the planning regulations changing.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments, councillors? No?
No comments here.
Okay, thank you. Let me move this so I can see all of you. How do I make this window bigger? It's gone away. There we go. Now, everybody happy? Okay, good. Next sheet, please. Andrew?
Right, just bear with me, Chairman, while I open that.
Okay, so looking at the Lloyd's current accounts. HD is Helping Dawlish, I take it?
That's right, yeah.
So lots of shopping and being reimbursed for shopping. And that's a £200 water fowl adoption, which is fantastic. Equipment grants, donations for the water fowl. Any comments on that page, councillors? Councillor John Pedderick? You need to unmute yourself?
Yeah, I was talking to Don the other day when he was in the compound, if I dare call it that, duck enclosure. And he was saying that the actual contributions from the public have stayed very much the same. They slowed down during sort of the dark days of when we went into lockdown, but they've picked up a lot recently and we're doing very well indeed. In fact, people, he thinks, are being more than generous now. So the income is going up. So that's good. And that indicates that more people are looking and more people are coming into the town, perhaps.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councillor Terry Lauder, I think you had your hand up?
I think it just emphasises that we really need to make the pact a bit more of our duck investment. Let's make a better display, if you like. I'm not quite sure how we should, but it's obviously greatly appreciated by the public. And that's where I'd say we could do a bit more.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you very much. Any other comments or thoughts from councillors? No, I see no hands, no blue hands. Next page, please. On the photocopier lease, I think we were, I recall, we were looking at options for the new photocopier lease. Did that ever go through? Did we change that or did that get lost in the pandemic?
No, this, this came in just prior to the pandemic starting. I think the new photocopier was installed about two weeks before we went into lockdown. So this is the new lease that's bringing about savings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Christmas lights. Could you elaborate on the Devon Pathfinder Warren visits, the hydrologic services, please?
That's the maintenance for the stations that they have, both at the Warren and on the Brook.
Oh, checking the water quality. Thank you. Any other comments from councillors? No?
Next page, Chairman.
Next page, please. All very, as expected, I think. Any comments from councillors? No? I think that's it. Is that the end of the pages?
That's the end of that one, Chairman, yeah.
Can I see then a show of hands, as you jump from one monitor to the other? A show of hands to approve those reports, please. Thank you very much. It's fantastic. So it's all approved. And that brings us back to, oops, I've lost my, lost my, lost my agenda.
And the next ones, actually, Chairman, we've done it in reverse. The ones we've just looked at were for the month of August. These are now the month of July. But it's just the way they're ordered on the email, agenda email, so apologies for that.
Okay, so again, looking at the credit card. What's the flexible belt barrier?
That's the barrier that you, between two metal poles, you've got the extendable. The manor house for queue and flow control.
There we go. Okay. Any other comments on that one? No?
No, okay.
Okay, thank you. Next page, please.
That's it for that one, Chairman. I'll just bring up the next document.
Thank you for sharing these on screen. It is a lot easier than trying to explain which one we're looking at. Okay. Lots of Helping Dawlish shopping. Refund of training. Was that because you couldn't go, somebody couldn't go, or was that because the training?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on that page? No, thank you. Next page, please. Okay, it's very, very strong water fowl donations, isn't it? Any comments on that page? No. Next page, please. Nice to see the planting of baskets all happening.
Oops, sorry.
Any comments from councillors? No, we're all quite happy.
And the last page.
The, have we swapped over the direct debits for the gas and electricity to the new suppliers now?
Yes, I believe so, Chairman, yeah.
So they're now on the green suppliers, which is good. Which was a very good deal to get green suppliers that were also cheaper. Okay.
For that one, Chairman.
Fantastic. Any comments from councillors or questions? No, everyone's quite happy with that. If everyone's happy with that, can we take a show of hands, please, to approve these reports? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Okay. Which I think if that brings us back to just trying to find my agenda again. I think there's nothing else there. The, so the Strand Centre people have not managed to come into the meeting?
No, and I've checked both my email and the Town Clark mailbox and there's no replies, Chairman.
Thank you very much for trying hard. So I think we have a proposal, which I'll make through the chair, that we postpone this to a subsequent meeting. And I think it would be wise if we could also give them the questions that we've asked so that they know what they can come back and answer the questions towards. Any comments or thoughts from councillors? Councillor Morehood, you have your hand up.
Mister Chair, Chairman, actually, my comment was to do with the accounts. It was just a note that it showed us how much was done under the umbrella of this council to help people during this COVID crisis. under the umbrella of this council to help people during this COVID crisis. It's obvious how much help has been going out just from these accounts without all the other things that have been going on. Just a comment.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, I think we can, we can thank all of the, all of the staff in the in the office who have been helping and everybody who's been been working with Helping Dawlish, because I think it does show the level of activity that was gone through during that lockdown phase. And I think I I for one am very grateful to all of those people who were there on the frontline helping. So I think we can certainly record that. That's, that's fine. So moving back, we have a motion to defer the grant application to the next meeting and give them a list of the questions that we raised at this meeting so that they can be present, so that we can discuss it. Okay. Can I see a show of hands in favour of that, please? Okay, I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Unless anybody has anything else, I think we're done. That's the end of our agenda. So yes, I think we beat your record, councillor Lauder.
Yeah, I think you did.
Thirty two minutes, that's good.